You know, have a path forward. Alright, so. I love it. You can all just share the. Anyone else for public input? Alright, so we're going to start with Zach Hoover Learning Center Building Project update as I said.
Good evening. Alright, so we have some pictures of the building status at this point. As you can see from these pictures, the front of the buildings got landscaping in, the sods been put in. Some of the new concrete.
Excuse me, is there another photograph making that noise? I just think it'll be hard for people to.
It's IDI group on the. On the line. I don't know.
We can mute our microphone, guys, if that helps. I'll try it on.
On the tape, it's hard enough sometimes. Sounds like it's an aquarium or something.
Right, right.
These are some pictures of the courtyard playground area in the back. Pirate shift on the left. It's a little hard to see there, but that's, there's also like a little house that the kids can play in. And there's a couple benches, picnic table. This is the main floor hallway area on the left. Put some of the drop ceilings in place. That's also, on the right is the lower level near the business office area. That's the hallway. Head down towards the kitchen area. This is the new fire alarm system. It's been put in on the left, those are the panels. On the right picture is the new server for the roof, for the whole building. It's also located downstairs. This is, a picture on the left is a picture of the tile that was installed in some of the restrooms. The one on the right is the kitchen. It's hard to see in the picture. That's the new floor and the hood. And if you look to the right, the walk, on the left is the walk-in boxes. That's a classroom with the, like the floating clouds. One on the right is one of the business offices. There's another business office picture on the left. One on the right is the backyard driveway area from, I believe it's, does that look like it?
That's from you and your.
That's from you and looking towards Love Lane, towards looking. There's a better picture of the playground area with the rubber surface. That's, it's really nice. It's got several different colors and really getting nice for the kids. Picture of that. There's the little house I was talking about on the left, picnic table. But the fixtures are starting to go in the bathrooms, which is nice, sinks and, sinks. This is downstairs in the business office. Conference room, I believe. Some furniture has started to go in. This is also in the business office. For files and whatever they need to do. Bathroom partitions have been going out. Sinks, toilets, everything else. Will come, start to come along. Pictures. This is the sage hall gymnasium, the lighting. This is actually more work done than this picture. Most of the ceiling's in now, all the lighting's in.
Looks nice and light, yeah.
Very bright.
Yeah, looks nice and bright, yeah.
It's all LEDs, you know, very energy efficient. And it just really lightened up the place between the new paint, new ceiling, tiles and new lighting. It's really, really came out nice. Okay, this is the back wall. I don't know if Ed wants to jump in on this. Do you want me to go through? Progress?
Yeah. Yeah, and then we'll do the retaining wall at the end.
Okay. I'll look, I'll go through our schedule. Real quick. I'll explain a little bit because I know that when I talked to Yorgos the other day, I tried to explain to him the schedule that we apply these line items to. And if you go down through that schedule, there's headings for each subgroup. Number one being like site work, finished landscaping. And if you jump down to number seven, that details all the line items for the elevator. Number twenty-one is the first floor reconstruction, classrooms and toilets. Under each one of those headings, there's line items that pertain to those. And we have a date that we project for those to start and finish. And I go down through that list for whatever we're doing that week or supposed to be doing that week. And try to let you know where we are. So that in a nutshell is how I correspond what we do during the week to the schedule that I gave you guys. I'll just run down through those lined items real quick. Not a whole lot has changed since last week in terms of. There is nothing major to report, we're on schedule for the most part. A couple of the line items we have completed and we had, you know, we're on to the next one. So I'll go down through these real quick. Line item number two is the site concrete curves, ramps, ramp and flat work. That's complete. We did have some repair work to do around the radius on the outside of the building for sidewalks that we damaged during construction going in and out of the building and those are done. Number three, the playground equipment installation. The only thing that's missing now is the outside edge to a strip, one panel, to butt up next to the sidewalk that was running down the side of the gym. Number four, the grading landscaping irrigation is complete. That's ahead of schedule. Number five, the site restoration is complete. Number seven, the line item for number seven for the elevator is on schedule. Number eight, the structural steel is complete. Number nine, the decking, concrete and finished roofing is complete. Number ten, the roof leaders, gutters, et cetera, are on schedule. We have a few items left that they're going to come back to button up for penetrations and miscellaneous stuff on the roof, but for the most part, it's probably ninety-nine percent. Electrical work for the elevator is on schedule. We are rate, the electrical for the elevator is to the edge of the shaft. The next move for the electrical part of it will be once they get the rails in and the, the, the equipment mounted on the backside of the door.
Pardon me, can I ask a question?
Sure.
You mentioned that ten and eleven were on schedule, but those completion dates were earlier this month.
They're, the roof leaders, I mean, they've been done. For, I mean, what we're lacking on those is, I mean, the roof for the most part is done.
Okay.
The penetrations that we put in are for, for the roof units and miscellaneous stuff that we've done after the fact. So right now, they're putting trim on and finishing up the outside of it. Yep. The elevator rail installation is on schedule. They should be here this week. Number twelve, number twenty-one, first floor classrooms, toilets are on schedule. Number twenty-two, there was a question on this that I received last week. And it's really, if you read the note at the bottom, it was a change due to unforeseen conditions. We had to get together, brainstorm on how to fix it. That's been remedied. That particular line item doesn't affect anything on the overall schedule. You'll notice on some of these items, we skip ahead as we can and we go back to those. But that particular item, number twenty-two, for the ceiling grid and border cuts, doesn't affect the overall schedule for the header of line twenty-one for the first floor. Number twenty-three, all the frames are set except for the sailboat frames. I'll give you an update on those. Those are in transit. They have some other stuff to do to get those ready, but they're out of the, out of production.
Gypsum Wednesday maybe?
We're hoping. Number twenty-four, complete framing upstairs on the gypsum board, CMU and, and the wall roughens, those are on schedule. Number twenty-five, light fixtures, diffusers. They're following, the electricians are following behind those as they install the roof grid. They're working right behind the other trades. The first floor corridor and lobby is on schedule. The ceiling grid is complete in the corridor. And they're working down the side hall going towards the gym. That should be complete tomorrow. Ceiling grid and border cuts and soffit work is on schedule. The, number thirty-six, the lights and diffusers are on schedule. Number forty-five, the lower level and the kitchen in general are on schedule. Number forty-six, the MEP is complete. Number forty-seven, complete gypsum board, masonry, et cetera. That's complete. Prime and paint, the majority of that has been done. They're going to have to go back through and do some touch-up, but the painting is complete in the basement. Ceiling grids and border cuts are complete. Number fifty, the install light fixtures are on schedule. Number fifty-one, the diffusers and registers are on schedule. The ceilings downstairs are whited out with the exception of where they have to work. That's pretty much complete. With, with the exception of the tiles that are left out. So I would say that's ninety percent. And, I mean, the tiles are there, they have to be put back in when they're done with the work. The casework that Paul showed you on the slides is installed in the basement. That's ahead of schedule. The quarry tile in the kitchen, number fifty-five, is complete. That's ahead of schedule. Number sixty-two, the gym renovations in general are on schedule. The border cuts, number sixty-three, are complete. Number sixty-four, the installation of the lighting is, I think they only have one more section to do. So the lighting is about ninety percent complete.
Some of the outside stuff.
Right. But in terms of the inside for that line item, my number sixty-five, that's on schedule. The ceilings are about ninety percent whited out. That picture was, I don't know if it was yesterday or Friday. We're lacking one square from being done in the gym for having that whited out. And that's what I have for the end of this last week.
So does it look like the building, the project will be still, will be completed on December thirty-first?
Yes. Yes. Any other questions?
Anything we're waiting on that's been delayed or?
Well, the retaining wall is, we've got to discuss that.
We're going to discuss that, but as far as the retaining wall goes, that hasn't, that doesn't inhibit or delay our schedule for the other items for tying up the back of the building.
Does it impact when we can pave? I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, fine.
I was saying, you're just waiting on the sailboat doors?
Yes, they should be here, I'm fingers crossed, they should be there this week. And we'll begin immediate installation of those and all the trades will follow.
And then you mentioned the floors are going to start getting installed.
This next week, the floors downstairs in the basement will start getting filled in. The other business office floors, the hallway. Most of those rooms will be complete to the far end where the cabinet is for the data room. They're going to work that way.
I was told that gym floor will be delivered November seventh.
With the, what is the projected timing of paving the back roadway?
I have them scheduled tentatively for Friday.
Okay, so soon.
The weather doesn't look so good for the next, I mean, so it looks like maybe the first part of next week, Monday, Tuesday.
Okay. It's been almost two months since the whole board was invited to do a walkthrough. Could we schedule another, another one of those in the next few weeks?
Yep, I would, I would, if, at, at your convenience, if you can wait a week or, you know, on the upper end of two weeks, I think you'll be pleased with what you see when you come down. It's not, not that you won't be pleased tomorrow if you come down. That's not what I mean, but I think you'll see a substantial even from when you were there last week.
Yeah, because I see, I see progress. So, I mean, I've been trying to go once a week or once every like ten days. And every time I go there, I see like progress.
Yes, there's a lot of improvements.
I'm coming along.
Now, now that we, you know, I mean, you'll, weekly, you'll see vast improvements. Because the finish, I mean, the stuff that catches your eye that will, you'll notice are the finishes. So obviously, we're starting with those, the casework, you know, the floors. A lot of the paint will be done at the end of this week upstairs.
So maybe, maybe next, since the weather's supposed to be bad this week?
Maybe towards the end of next week.
Or is there also a lot of work like? In the ceilings, things like that, they're all like pretty much done.
Sounds good.
You're, you're welcome anytime.
The floors, some of the floors will be in at that point.
Yeah. If you give, if you give us a week, we'll have some of the floors and that stuff in there you can take a look at.
Sounds good.
I, yeah, I'll answer any questions.
Also, Ed, Ed was on mute, so should we check in and make sure there wasn't anything that he wanted to ask?
No, thanks, Jordan. I think, I think Paul did a great job, Paul and Tim did a great job of bringing you guys up to speed. But are there any other questions as far as the construction progress?
Doesn't look like it. You want to go to the retaining wall?
Yeah, can we go through the first slide for the retaining wall?
Yeah, number eighteen?
Yes.
The two are on.
I think we have questions for the architect that were okay, right? We had other questions that we don't want to.
Go ahead, Ed.
Oh, okay. So for the retaining wall, as you see on slide eighteen here, the first image, this is the photograph that was taken prior to any construction beginning and during the fieldwork where we were documenting many of the conditions that were there. As you can see in the photograph and outlined with the notes there, that upper portion of the back wall that you see that actually has a cobblestone look to it, veneer to it, is actually on the neighbor's property that is not currently on the district property. The lower wall that you see has been quite disrepair where a portion of it is concrete, a portion is wood and a portion is block. And as you can see, each section of that is falling over. That, those were the pieces that are actually on the district property and they were included in the project for removal and renovation. So now as we go through, if we can forward to slide nineteen.
Go ahead, Ed.
This is an image here that shows after those walls were removed. And now we can see that the concrete foundation portion of the neighbor's wall is exposed to view and for inspection. You can see down below that it actually has a typical wall foundation footer to it, not something that we typically see for a retaining wall. And then behind it, you can see the other adjoining neighbor's property's wall. It actually does not have a concrete foundation. And we'll see that in some subsequent images in a minute. And so you see that we protected it by burping up the dirt there in that place. So if we forward on to slide twenty, twenty?
Go ahead, Ed.
The image that you're looking at here is right in the middle of the two adjoining properties. So as we're looking on the right-hand side of this slide where you see the casted placed concrete, that's below the one section of the wall there. And as that transitions to the left, you see that it completely turns into dirt. And really, that's just all soil currently in that spot now. There is a thin layer of concrete that's below that wall, a six-inch layer of concrete has kind of a foundation to it. However, this is right at the transition between the two neighbors' properties. And then if we go on to slide twenty-one. And again, this is all the way over to the Love Lane side. And as you can see here, again, there's that same line that you see that, in fact, on the right-hand side, you can see an individual standing on the top of the foundation. It changes from that six-inch concrete layer to a sixteen-inch concrete footer. But yet it is still only a footer section. It's not actually a toe and heel section that you would normally see in a concrete retaining wall. And this is again, this applies to the Love Lane property where you see the wall turn. And once again, below that concrete footer level is only dirt. There's no foundation at that point.
Jordan, it might be helpful to be able to have a consult with him during Zach's efforts. Few questions?
Yeah, I think we have some questions for you, Ed, about the retaining wall. But given that there are legal matters at issue, we, we'd like to discuss it in executive session with the attorney present. And if you can be present as well, that would be helpful.
Sure, is that, you mean this evening or is there another time?
Yes, this, this evening after the public session of the meeting is over.
Gotcha, okay.
Great, thank you.
So do we want to go on now to the memorial update?
Yes, that would be great. And just so you know, we have here in the audience, I'd asked Dawn and Dave Harvey to come, as well as Drew Harvey. He's not able to make it, but they're the ones that spearheaded this project and put together their architectural plans. So, and they were, they were part of the construction crew that built what's already there. So it's helpful, I asked them to be here because they can hear, you know, your perspective on it. But I also think they're a great resource to give you any information as to, you know, I think there were questions about how far down the concrete went and stuff like that. And so they're here to, to be able to speak to that as well. And they also distributed documents to the board that we can also send you that talk about the specifications of the, the equipment that they had put up.
Perfect, that sounds terrific. So yeah, as we look at the memorial, and again, I'll jump right into kind of on slide twenty-two, where it'd be kind of a summary of what we were taking a look at. Our biggest concern is basically two, shall I say violations or two impedances on what's called the use zone. And for those of you, the use zone for this equipment is really the safety zone where you don't, do not want any structures within that particular use zone. Because ideally, this is the zone that the manufacturer and the American playground manufacturer's standard is identifying as the area that children could fall off of the equipment and therefore needs to be free from obstructions. So when we look at the two use zones for the two particular pieces of equipment, and basically, we have two pieces of equipment out there. One is a, is a triple pull-up bar. And that particular piece of equipment is three pull-ups bars in line that measure from distance out to out fifteen feet. The use zone for that particular equipment is thirteen feet by twenty-seven feet. Now, what that means is that at the end of each of those pieces, or at the end of that equipment on each side, you need at least six feet clear of any other obstruction. The next piece of equipment that's there are the parallel bars. And currently, those parallel bars are two bars that are separated by two feet. And the current structure is twelve feet long. The use zone for that particular structure is fourteen by twenty-four feet. Now, I'm doing the math quickly here. What that also means is that structure in addition needs six feet at the end of each, each end of that structure. Now, one of the key components of this is that those use zones are not allowed to overlap. So currently, between the two structures, there is currently six foot, six inches. So obviously, those two use zones are currently overlapping. Our recommendation is really, we need to move one of the structures a minimum of five feet, six inches. Now, in addition to that, the current configuration, as seen in some of the photographs here on, if we can go to number twenty-three, slide twenty-three. You'll see in that lower photograph that the memorial stone with the plaque is actually located on the fence side towards the middle of those two structures. What that does is on a diagonal from the ends of the two structures, it puts it within four feet of the pole, which again, is encroaching on that use zone that we really want to keep clear. So really, our, our recommendation is potentially, one of the structures could remain in place if we adjust the location of the other structure, again, to make sure that those use zones don't overlap. And then relocate the monument stone to the end, kind of closer to the sidewalk into the building. Again, as you approach these particular structures from the main thoroughfare or the main walkway, I think that would actually rectify a lot of these overlap safeties, use zone issues. And then the only other thing that we, we did do an investigation and Paul Ropin helped us with his, with his crew to actually verify the depth of the foundations. Currently, what's required is a minimal of twenty-four inches of concrete. And what was found is twenty-one inches. So we are close to what's required and with some modification, we think that we can get there to the twenty-four inches. But that's something that will also have to be maintained is making sure that those foundations are twenty-four inches in concrete.
Can I just ask a question? Where are those requirements coming from when you say twenty-four inches as opposed to twenty-one and the?
Right from, right from the manufacturer of the equipment.
Am I allowed to comment? Yeah, I was going to say, I'd like to hear from Mr. Harvey on that.
Yeah, I think this is why I asked them to be here, so that we could all get to, you know.
Okay, so.
Do you want to just, so Ed, this is Mr. Harvey, who's also an architect?
Dave Harvey, D.J. Harvey Architects.
I'm not sure.
Good, I'm not sure what you've investigated, but I was there for the installation and observed that all the footings are, there are thirty-six inches of concrete and a twenty-four inch embedment of steel into the thirty-six inches of concrete. Two of the footings, we were stopped in midstream pouring with a stopper quarter. That footing might not be up to its top level and could very well be the twenty-one inches. But.
Well, can you verify that? Because I was.
Yes, there are some of the footings that are higher than others, yes.
So all the footings were supposed to have been poured to the rough grade that was supplied on site. And two of those on the parallel bars, we were literally stopped while mixing the cement. So they are not full. Other than that, the overlapping use zone we disagree with, our architecture interpretation is, there cannot be an object within six feet of either end of. is, there cannot be an object within six feet of either end of the equipment, which is the case. And we were responding to the facility manager request to minimize the size of this exercise area. So we are sharing a seven-foot zone between the ends of both pieces of equipment. The rock is not in its final location, it's in the work zone waiting for a plaque to be installed. Once the plaque is installed, it would be moved to the end or anywhere else the facility manager felt, you know, was not in the way of the other playing field. So in essence, we were stopped probably twelve hours before completion. So that's, that's literally, that's our position. So I've given the board all the specifications directly from the equipment manufacturer. It clearly states that the fall zone is to a object, i.e. the other piece of equipment. You can share the equipment, the overlap zone, you know, if site restrictions are so tight that that is what was requested. So that's our position on the whole thing, and we, you know, we'll answer any other questions.
Thank you, that's really helpful.
So if I just get clarity between Dave and Ed, the foundation that we're talking about, if you continued the pour, we would obtain...
There would have been thirty-six inches of concrete with two-foot embedment of steel.
And that would be, meet the requirement, correct Ed?
Yes, that is correct, yep.
Right, it's more. So the parallel bars only actually need one foot of embedment, and they count the eight feet of impact zone or wood chips. We didn't feel that that counted as embedment, so the parallel bars are actually deeper than required.
So you overbuilt the safety feature?
Correct, yep.
So I think ultimately, it sounds like this comes down to what our insurer will cover, so.
And on that respect, we're, all the people that worked on the project are licensed contractors.
And can I ask a question? Have you ever done any work, other work for the district?
We were involved with the greenhouse over at the middle school for the Boy Scouts. We did all the work for that.
You did?
Yep.
You constructed?
Yep. And we, you know, we've done some other consulting with kind of the stage area and gym area of the elementary school, but never came to fruition, hard work, but I know the consultation was taken.
Okay.
There's only one certification to be a New York State Certified Architect?
Yes, but, you know, working for public schools, they do tend to like a group of people that specialize in that, so I understand that.
But you know, specific.
But yes, we can read the codes and follow the instructions.
And legally do the work.
And legally do the work.
So it sounds like the next question we have is, will our insurer cover it if the fall zones are overlapping?
Right. And that, yeah, that comes down to...
That's just up to our insurer.
I mean, we were trying to accommodate a very tight zone.
Well, let me clarify that. When I told you I needed to keep it as small as possible, I meant kept it the safest, smallest possible.
That's correct, and as a licensed architect.
That's what I meant, not that you put them on top of each other.
In no way, Paul's been very...
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear though.
No, no, very helpful. So, no, it was when we walked the facility and looked at all the different locations, I as architect said, okay, well, the tightest we could get this is to overlap these. And when you go back to the specifications of the equipment, it simply says you need a six-foot zone before a, an object, another object. Not a six-foot zone to possibly another student standing there, and then another six feet to the other piece of equipment. So.
And the rock is not in its final place.
And the rock is, it's not done yet.
It can be moved.
It can be moved to any location. And that's a whole nother things, like where would it look nicest, where would it be best?
Correct.
So when we shrunk, when we shrunk the zones...
But it would be compared to whatever the setback is, if you will.
Yes, yeah. So when we shrunk the work area down, the rock is really just a product of that and was going to be moved. It is, that is an object within six feet of either piece of equipment.
And while you were, during the construction, you were in communication with Paul?
Yes, Paul came out and talked to us.
Well, I was in the initial picking out a spot to put it. I was not involved with the initial construction because I was, I was told by, it was a little bit of confusion, Ed. I was, they told me that they had got the board approval to start.
Which we did.
Once, once later on I found out we didn't have, so.
Nope, board approval, always had board approval.
The board, the board of the board wants to approve it.
The board did approve it?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's, that's been another thing, the board did approve it.
The, the board approved the project, but not to begin construction on the project.
Yeah, the question was the board approval, so I was clarifying that.
Right, right, but not...
Board approval, but wasn't...
But not to be, to begin construction because we had a few hoops we had to, which, which is all, it's really great, the work that they're doing, but we had to go over a few more hoops, which was our attorney, and the first memo from our attorney was, had a lot of huge concerns. And then the second hoop was our insurers who had a more lengthy list of more concerns.
So have we heard from our insurers?
Which was, and I shared all that with the board, was that our, that having volunteers on site, only because of the history of having, not you, but having any kind of volunteers on site, have proven to be very litigious for school districts in general. So, and, you know, I've shared this with the board, that they, they really don't want that. They want folks that are a insured contractor, and we're going to ask for this tonight, that when this type of thing goes out to bid, would they bid it for a dollar? Cause then we have our insurance, we have our, you know, so the contractors that were so benevolently working on this, to finish this project, do it for a dollar. Because we, it really needs to be the cover of a bid because, and this isn't coming from us, this is coming, and the reason I had to do the stop order is coming from our attorney and our insurers who said, they can't do that because a year from now, you, you so kindly are here doing this, which we do appreciate, but...
Well, the work was done by licensed contractors. We offered certificates of insurance for everyone.
So let me, let me finish though. A year from now, here's the scuttlebutt around town is, so that work was done, it doesn't, we didn't have a, we didn't have a, hadn't gone out for bid, it hadn't been bought.
It was a gift to the school then.
Right, but let me finish, let me finish. So it, that gift, which is so kind and so wonderful, so a bunch of volunteers showed up and put that in.
What did contractors show up?
But nobody was, nobody was evaluating, no, the district was watching it, and now we're going to sue because we don't know if it was done. And an attorney would...
The facility manager was onsite every day, the groundskeeper, JR, was on, onsite every day, and a licensed architect was on the job every day.
But, but, no, and all that's really great, but in a court with a...
I just would like to know, how do we go forward?
That's, I think that's what I'd like to...
So that, no, that was why, that's why, that's why it was cut short. And I think we can move forward really rapidly, especially if we go out for bid right away, which, which we're talking about.
But I'm unclear why we have to go out for bid, and I'm unclear, I mean, we, the people that installed are licensed. When they volunteered, hold on, let me finish. When they volunteered, this has been going on for an incredibly long period of time. We approved it a very long time ago, this was supposed to be done this summer. So this is an extraordinarily frustrating situation for, I'm sure, everyone involved. But the volunteers were licensed. They said they were licensed months and months ago. If we didn't ask for a copy of their license, then that's on us. They did offer, they were, took to hand them over. So it was installed, it was installed by licensed contractors. We should have copies of their license. The plans were from architects who have done other work for the district. So the question is, do we really know that you need to go out for bid, or can we just finish the project?
Well, hold, let me just, if I, you know, Jeff, we're not accomplishing any of this, discussing it amongst ourselves. I think everybody wants to see this completed as soon as possible.
Right, so we submitted the drawing showing our architect.
So everyone wants to see this completed as soon as possible, but we can't, we have to satisfy our insurance company. We're a school district, and we have liability and insurance issues, and it's not for anyone here at the table to decide. So I think what we need to do is follow up with our insurance company as soon as possible, maybe tomorrow, provide the additional information that Mr. Harvey's given today. So there were concerns that our architects have. Seems like some or all of those questions have been answered. Let's pass that along to the insurance company as soon as possible and see what they say. Because I, we could sit here and talk about it all night, and I appreciate what everyone's saying, but we have to get the insurance company to approve it, and so I think.
But it'd be important that the insurance company knows that the people that constructed it are licensed.
Sure, all that information that...
We'll let them know all of that. And then I just also want to, to the extent that the insurance company does not approve of the overlapping fall zone, then I just want to make sure we're all on the same page as to what the next steps, right? So ideal situation, insurance company can see these plans, be okay with them as is. If they're not, Ed has provided an alternative. And that alternative involves moving, I believe, the parallel bars six, five, five and a half feet further. And...
Ed, right, Jordan, just to clarify, I think we're talking with Paul Wilken, it works better for the district's facility people if we move the triple pull-up down as opposed, and leave the parallel bars where they are.
Okay, well, either way, so the idea is...
What if we offer the district move along the...
So I would say, why don't we find out from our insurer? And then I would like to just, I think we've all approved it as a board. I don't know that this needs to be a board-level issue after tonight. We have a lot of other things we need to accomplish. So my suggestion would be that if, if the, if the issue is to remove one and move it, that we go according to whatever, you know, Ed suggests on that. Or if the Harveys prefer to just remove one of the op, the pieces, that, that's fine too.
Can't we just give direction to Paul to work with our architects and the Harveys to get this done as quickly as possible in a way that will satisfy the insurance company?
That's kind of what I'm getting at, is that I don't think we as a board need to worry about which one is moving and how far.
No, I, I don't care about the details, but I do want an update on the coming board meetings because this is languished for way too long, and I feel like unless we have public conversations, it's going to take another five or six months. So.
Well, there's one other item that you have to be aware of. If, if we're required to remove this because your insurance company's decided you can't share a fall zone, there's cost involved with that. So, and it's our interpretation that what has been put in is perfectly satisfies any code. So even if your insurance company says, well, we don't want it, they're going to have to prove why they don't want it. So they're going to have to create documentation as to why they can't be that way. And then we will talk, we'll come back and discuss what we'll do. So as of right now, the equipment on your field is property of Dogg Patch Bandit. So we would like to just make sure everybody's on the exact same page before any action is taken.
Yeah, well, let's, I mean, let's cross that bridge if we come to it. I think right now, everybody wants to see this approved in a way that satisfies the insurance company. If that, if that, if we get to a point where that's not possible, we can, we can address that at that point. But I think, it seems to me there ought to be a way to get this done that satisfies the insurance company, and let's have everyone try to focus on that.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you for coming, it's been very useful.
Okay, so next on the agenda, I just put this in here, superintendent interim specifications, just wanted to give the board an opportunity to just discuss, we, you know, school leadership came in probably a month ago at this point to talk about the specifications that they heard from the community. We then approved those specifications for the permanent position. And given that we are going with an interim for six months, I just, to the extent that any of those specifications might be different, I think it's important that we set that expectation and have that conversation.
I'll jump in. From my perspective, while I think the overall requirements overlap a lot, I think because it's budget season, and between that and the bond project that, you know, has to kind of get tied up, and then the post of that bond project, that there, there might be a greater emphasis on the fiscal piece of the job, particularly because there are some other things that are part of a superintendent's role that you just are not going to accomplish in six months, right? You're not going to launch a whole bunch of new initiatives if you're coming on board just for six months. So as an example, doesn't mean you're not going to do any new things, but just overall, it's, it's not as much as about initiating a lot of long-term things as it's shoring up kind of that process. So I would think that the fiscal piece is a little more heavily weighted in this scenario.
Anyone else want to add on?
The only thing I would, I would agree with what Chris is saying, the only thing I would add on is that having somebody who knows the roles and responsibility of a superintendent really, really well inside and out would be another component. It's not, it's not the time or place to having somebody get their wings as a superintendent for the first time in a short-term position without a hundred percent support structure around them to, to be in a new role. So somebody who's a veteran superintendent would be another piece that we, I'd be looking for.
Those all make sense to me, does anyone?
The, the only thing I would add is that I think looking for an interim is different than looking for full-time. So the approach generally isn't to have an interim come in and test drive them for full-time. We're looking at them as two separate searches, and slightly, maybe slightly different criteria for two separate searches that are going on in parallel.
Oh, and just to add on to that, it doesn't cost anymore to do that from a search perspective.
Right, it was the same fee to do and add the interim.
Whether it's one or search or two.
That makes sense to me, I don't know that we need to vote on a separate set of specifications, I just wanted to put that out there.
Did anybody else kind of agree with that?
We might have, it's the idea we'll have just a, a bit of a narrower focus, which is helpful. Okay, so moving on to the consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve items six-point one through six-point three?
So move.
Sorry. Any discussion? Oh, no, no discussion for consent agenda items, so.
We'll sweep the vote, come on. It should be coming up.
This is not a discussion point, but I do think that it'd be helpful if there's anything unique about the tax levy for it just to be, for the public to be informed.
Okay, that's unanimous. I don't believe there's anything unique about it, but is there...
Right, there's nothing that was unexpected, right, in the tax levy?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Um, then Laura, if you want to ask her anything.
Oh, yeah. No.
Nothing great, all right.
Nothing unique.
So before we go into executive session, I realize that there's not a second public input, so just to insert the public input too, if there's anyone else that would like to come and speak at public input, please come on up.
I just wanted to show our members with some of the notes.
Hi, Sandy Girl. I have one question about Stellamares and the business office areas. Is there an egress system? Cause didn't like, there were many windows down there. So that's question number one.
All, all the offices have windows.
Yeah, they're just looked really small, like it looked, so there's proper egress and everything, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause then I was wondering why.
But I don't think those are the actual egresses, I think their egresses go out to the hallway.
Oh, cause I was like, I couldn't get up there and get up there.
No, no, they, but those are not their, those are not their, their egresses, which is why we couldn't use classrooms down there. So actually, they would go out through kind of the old classroom staircases going out to what is now going to be the, the play area. And then the other one would be out into what is the chymnasium.
But there's going to be like enough light now that this, that...
Oh, they all have windows, they all have full-on windows.
Okay.
But it looks cages a lot, you know.
What we, well, what we could see from back there, it looked like it was a little dark. So that was question number one. And then question number two, of course, you guys know that the Mike Semkus Memorial's very, you know, challenging an issue for me. And I did foil, I tried to just get a feel where we're at back in the beginning of October because we were all ready for what we wanted to happen. So I sent an email to the board just saying like, what's the update? And I was asked a foil letter that you guys had received from your insurance company, which I got like three weeks later, which was a little unsettling. But I'm reading it here, and I have to tell you all, you might want to just go back and reread it, because it just says that it wants, we recommend for the district to proceed with the installation of the equipment and only after receiving specs that have been designed and approved by your district's architects. So that was September nineteenth, we're almost into November. So that takes way too long for me. It would strongly prefer that the installation would be formed by a licensed and insured contractor, which they were. But we're doing the same thing, I'm school desire, volunteer labor. If you choose volunteers, please let us know. So I think what your insurance company said, so you already have an answer that you guys got on September nineteenth. So this shouldn't take another two weeks. I just wanted to just refresh, because you guys, I don't know how much emails and paperwork yet. So for me, I think it's just a go because they are licensed, these guys can talk to these guys, and we can get it done. I'll keep coming back, because, kind of like academic support, this is near and dear to my heart, so I just wanted to say that. And three weeks for the foil was a little ridiculous, but she didn't have it, you guys had it, but if you're already talking to your insurance company, who's nicer says that's what you need and they've met those specifications, it's no writing for me. Thanks, guys.
Good evening, Stellamares, questions?
We all know you, but can you just stay here for the rest?
Jeff Peters, three fifty-six Main Street, Sag Harbor. Jeff Peters, three fifty-six Main Street, Sag Arbor. You mentioned the runoff from the, I'm a former member of the Harvard Committee, and that was our biggest pet peeve was you having downspouts going into dry wells. I didn't mention, did you, you have dry wells where the downspouts are going into for the...
Yes.
Okay, 'cause that wasn't mentioned.
They were all, and if they didn't work, they were repaired. They were all repaired, they all go into...
What are they going to?
They all go into dry, dry wells on the property.
New, new dry wells?
They, new ones.
Did you check the existing ones? 'Cause years ago, they had really major problems.
We repaired everything that they're tied into.
All the lines are on.
Okay, all right.
It was done very well.
Now, with the playground is built, you have the cesspools underneath there. Were the cesss pools all pumped out before everything was...
So, Mr. Peters, I, I mean, this is public comment, we're really happy to hear all your comments, but we can't, this is not a situation for someone to just come up and question members of administration or the contractors. Do you have comments or you think that there's something we're not addressing, please explain that?
Okay, did you, did you, okay, I, my recommendation, if you put in a playground in, I hope you check the cesspools. The third question is, I see you put the landscaping in the sod. As a landscaper, you're not supposed to be walking on the sod or anything for like two weeks. I drive by and I sit and look at the guys working out on the lawn. Do you have a warranty on the, on all the landscaping? Because you shouldn't be working on cutting yourself, 'cause it's gonna kill the grass. So, I don't want that all to be killed and then boom, so...
Can I make a comment? Just for the record, the playground is not anywhere near the septic.
Okay, thank you.
I, I was telling you, it's not. The septic is in the, on the other side of the driveway, on the other side of the retaining wall.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Recently, there was an article in the paper about some additional IBI expenditures, and it reported that the board was unaware of the report. But I thought it'd be good to give Katie the opportunity just to address that situation.
Yes, the, they brought up that I signed off on a couple of, uh, for two expenditures, and I won't be able to go very deep on them. I was away from work due to the illness, and I just got back three workdays ago, so I won't be able to talk deeply about them, but if we bring it back up, you know, the, may be able to do that next week. However, what the expenditures that I did sign off on were, one, I think, was around twenty-three thousand, the other one was for, I believe, twenty-four thousand over a series of months, which could threshold it around ninety thousand. My understanding was when I was given those to sign off on was those were under, those are architectural expenditures for the project being expanded. And I've been doing projects, working closely with projects since two thousand and one, which is about eighteen years. And my understanding of architectural contracts and sign-offs on expansions of architectural contracts is that architectural contracts come, are signed off on once, once for the Board of Education. They look through the contracts, their attorneys look through the contracts, and they're signed off on once. If the contract has to expand because projects expand and contract, sometimes they get smaller, sometimes they get bigger, that the, there's a worksheet that's attached that those architects will fill out, and so that the project does not slow down, that those have to be signed off on so that the project keeps moving along. And that, you know, I was schooled going through my leadership seminars and the business classes I took, is that the most important thing is a project stay on time and on budget. Now, you know, I can be shamed pretty heavily on the fact that this project has not been on time. It has gone late, but at that time when I was signing, I, my great hopes were we would be on time and on budget. So, I did sign off on those expenditures, and, and again, daily, I'm signing off on expenditures, and I try and always keep the board, so for example, on this building project, on change orders, I would immediately alert the board if there's gonna be a change in contractor expenditures, because those resonate. But on this, those costs from the architects, because we had talked extensively about what those costs would be, because I believe it was, and I can't, don't quote me, I believe it was the roof and the fact that we would be having the supervision of the architects and their work, and, and again, the supervision and the architect work would be expanded, that I did authorize it, and the one question I asked is, where is this being funded? Which is the question that all superintendents are asked, is that it was coming out of the bond project, which meant it was coming out of the architectural contract, which is called soft costs. So, I did sign off on those soft costs, which we are, which was budgeted. We are still not over on the architectural soft costs. However, you know, when news comes to the board, I never wanna surprise a board, I never wanna surprise a community. And so, you know, I apologize that that, you know, information came as a surprise to the board. Because as I say, when we, we work through a building project, there's projects that go up and there's things that go down within a bond project. And I think Ms. Buschami did a really fine job of trying to walk, bookwalk through, and this was an item that was a surprise to the board, and it shouldn't have been. It should've been something that I probably, if I was rushing along, I probably should've gone slower, and it would've been a great teaching moment for the board. But I don't think I could've not signed off on this because my job, my priority is to keep a project moving along as rapidly as possible, and the board had already discussed these things that were put in front of them, and the architectural supervision and work follows this.
Um, if there's nothing else, can I get a motion to convene to executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person?
So moved.
Second.
And we just have a... And to talk with our school attorney.
And to talk, yes, and...
Our contacts, please. And then, nevermind, thanks, we'll put that on.
All in favor?
Yes.